Welcome. Thank you all for joining us today. My name is Emily Sasse. I am the Policy Director for the Next Generation Texas Initiative at the Texas Public Policy Foundation, and we're so glad you can be here with us. Today, we'll be discussing a small but very influential sector of Texas public education: charter schools. We'll especially be focusing on their relationships to cities. It's a pending matter of business from last session that we had initial discussions, but no full resolution in that process. A quick note: this panel is CLEA accredited. There's a sign-in sheet over by the door if you're here in person and want to sign up for that. If you're attending virtually, there is a QR code that you can scan and sign up that way. Quick recap: Charter schools have been established in Texas since 1995. They now serve approximately 316,775 students, give or take a few. For those crunching the numbers, that's about 6% of Texas public education students. There is a cap on the number of open enrollment charter schools that we can have in Texas, and that number is 305 charters. We're still not close to that, actually. At the start of last session, there were 179 charter operators. With five new charters granted this year, it means we're still hovering around the 60% mark of reaching that cap. But getting a charter or permission to expand if you already have one could mean less than you think if they can't open their doors, if there is, for instance, a second silent cap. Charters across the state reported some resistance to their establishment or expansion. In some cases, this has forced them to either delay opening or change their plans entirely. Some ISD superintendents have actually called for cities to enact moratoria on charter schools within their jurisdictions or protested publicly against their existence. So joining me to discuss this topic are our distinguished panelists. We start with Chairman Dan Huberty. He's been a state representative since 2011, been the chairman of the House Committee on Public Education for two terms now, and serves on the House Committee on County Affairs as well. He's served on the Committee of Public Education every one of his previous sessions, and is the chairman of the Subcommittee on Educator Quality in the 84th. He's championed several important pieces of legislation relating to public education, including most notably and recently, House Bill 3 in the last session, which implemented transformational reforms to public school finance in Texas by modernizing outdated formulas, increasing the state share of funding, putting more money into classrooms, and energizing teacher pay. Next to him, we have Representative Joe Dacotell. He's been a Texas state representative for District 22 and has served in the legislature for 20 years. He's an attorney and a businessman. In the '86 legislative session, he was appointed to the House Calendars Committee and also served on Human Services and State Affairs. Previously, he served on the Beaumont City Council and was appointed by Governor Mark White to the Job Training Coordinating Council and Lamar University Board of Regents. He's also served as Vice President for Administration and Legal Council of Lamar University Beaumont. Next to me, we have Representative Lacy Hole, as of yesterday, Representative, not Representative -elect, congratulations. She is a native Houstonian who was born and raised in House District 138, which she now represents. She co-owns a small business in Houston and was former president of her HOA. She's worked with a variety of nonprofits to advocate for policies and protect the liberties of Texas families, and has made many trips to Austin to testify before the Texas Legislature to fight for the liberty of Texans. Additionally, she has volunteered on many local campaigns to support conservative candidates in the Houston area. And finally, she'll be joining us virtually today is Sister Starlee Coleman. She is the CEO of the Texas Public Charter Schools Association and has more than 20 years of experience turning public policy ideas into laws. She founded School Forward LLC, a public affairs firm that advances education reform policies. Her work has earned a Templeton Freedom Award for Best Initiative in Public Relations in 2008, and the Spark Freedom Award for Best PR Campaign. She's done hundreds of media interviews, appeared on many nationally syndicated radio and TV programs, and delivered dozens of speeches on current affairs to civic groups. Without further ado, let's jump right into the topic of the day. Starlee, I want to start with you. What are charter schools facing right now in Texas cities? Give us more details on that.
Hey, I'm sorry I can't be moved in today. You know, look, but here's the challenge that charter schools across the state are facing in big towns, in small towns, and in suburbs. You know, I really like the way that you that you phrase this as a silent cap. We are facing discrimination by city-level officials in big ways and small ways, from being able to get building permits to just being harassed about what we put on our signs outside of our schools, the fees that we're required to pay to get approval, to expand parking lots, and all of that kind of stuff is really getting challenging for us. And when you talk to charter school leaders across the state, they will tell you that this has become one of their number-one barriers to growth and moving students off of their waitlist and into buildings. So I just want to give you two examples. So here's a big example. We have a charter school network in Dallas that built a middle school about 10 years ago. And when they built the middle school, they bought the property next door to their middle school and had both properties rezoned to be schools at the same time. And since then, so they've had this piece of land next door to their middle school, always with the intention that it would become a high school for their middle school students to matriculate into when they're done with middle school. And for the last 10 years, they have not been able to get a building permit to build on their own property. So, you know, not only is this becoming just a sort of discrimination issue against these schools that want to offer educational opportunity, but it's also becoming a property rights issue. And so that's one example that we're facing. That's a big. And here's a small. A couple of years ago in Houston, the person in charge of sign approval for the city of Houston, so like the top guy in the city's sign approval department, sign permitting department, decided himself that charter schools are not public schools. So he sent a letter to a number of charter schools that had pending sign permit requests in front of saying, hey, I've decided that you're not public schools. So not only am I not approving this sign for you, but you also need to take down every single one of your signs outside of your other campuses because they have the word "public school" on it. So schools had to go to court, you know, hire lawyers, spend a bunch of money on legal fees instead of in the classroom where the money belongs to be spent. So those are two examples that our schools are facing, you know, all across the state.
Thanks so much for that, Starlee. Representative Dacotell, I want to go next to you. You filed a bill last session, House Bill 3155, to address this issue exactly. It went through Chairman Huberty's committee. Please tell us about that, and what inspired you to file that? What were you saying?
Well, sort of things that she was pointing out, that disparity in treatment between charter schools, which I perceive, understand, and believe are public schools, and independent school districts, and what appeared to be an attempt by municipalities or other forms of governments to circumvent the will of the legislature when we set up the charter schools. And we set them up, and we set them up for a reason. We felt that they had a valuable part to play in the education system. And then cities found a way to try to diminish their ability to operate. And so the bill that I filed was to correct that, to pretty much state that if an independent school district has these rights as far as their relationship with a municipality, so does the charter school. And so that was the purpose of the bill. I don't particularly remember exactly who brought the bill, but I just thought that it was an unfair treatment, and it was not what was intended when we set charter schools up. We did not limit, put those limitations on the charters.
Right. Chairman, you've been a school board member. You are a parent. You've chaired House Public Education through significant bills and finance overhauls. You've also dealt with the balance of power between the state and municipalities, leading significant reforms to city annexation, which, for those of us who don't follow city annexation, is the practice of cities expanding their jurisdictions previously, which took place without the consent or consultation of the property owners being annexed. So this issue addresses both public education and balance of powers. What are you seeing here?
Well, I think that, you know, in general, what we've seen with the passing of House Bill 3 last session specifically, is that one of the big components of that bill was the ability to reduce property taxes. And we've put a cap on property taxes. And so what I tell people all the time is that, you know, your biggest tax bill that you get is from your school district. And so one of the things that we did last session was to shift or to try to reduce property taxes for our school districts. And so that was a pretty significant piece of the puzzle. You know, we also required, you know, additional accountability for the school districts and the school boards for being able to increase their taxes. There's much more accountability now in the system that was created, and I think that that's important. I know that some school districts were not happy about some of the things that we did on that, but we did create a lot more transparency through the process. And then I would say, you know, on annexation issues and things of that nature, you know, one of the biggest, I'm not going to say frauds, but it's a pretty significant issue, is this situation we have in Houston, and some other cities have the same thing, where they've come in and annexed areas and create special-purpose districts. So that's one of the things I think we need to go after as well. City of Houston, last I checked, generates somewhere around $80 to $90 million a year on unincorporated areas. So I think, Lacy, you're in an unincorporated area, just like I am, in Harris County, but they have a tax that they create associated with that. So, and those are resources, candidly, that could go to the schools, could help schools and things of that nature, but they've taken that and they're using it for their general revenue funds. So, you know, it's one of those deals where I think we really need to take a hard look at some of those things again. There's some more work to do. Phil King, last session, because we passed the annexation bill in 2017, and Phil King came and fixed it, so it basically made it for everybody, you know, gets the right to be able to vote, not just smaller populations. So it's good. It was a good thing that was done associated with that. But, you know, cities and schools, you know, particularly districts, and again, you know, it's kind of a weird thing in Harris County because of the amount of unincorporated areas that are there. And so, you know, the governance associated with that, we try to really create a check and balance that makes some sense.
Yeah. Thank you for that. And for all that prior work, you've done a lot, sir. Representative Hole, charters and ISDs, we're hearing about some face-offs they've had in city contexts, but they don't always have to clash. In fact, public and charter schools in your district are known across the state for working together. So can you tell us about the Sky partnership in your district?
Yes. So that's Spring Branch ISD, KIP, and Yes Prep. And it's a perfect example of how it doesn't have to be a competition. It can be a collaboration. And so we have two schools. Northbrook Middle is Yes Prep. Northbrook High School is a Yes Prep. And then Landrum Middle School is KIP. And both of those middle schools can feed into the high school, the Yes Prep High School. And they work so well together, the principals and everything. And it's really wonderful for the students because they get to share in the electives and sports and all of that. And it's just really great local control, community-driven innovation, and even knocking doors. I heard it all the time, with parents with their kids in charter schools are trying to get the lottery for the charters. And Spring Branch ISD is so happy with it, and it's a perfect example. And I know it's a national model. People from Denver and Tulsa have come to look at the Sky partnership, and it's been wonderful for Spring Branch ISD and for the charter schools, and the parents are very, very happy.
Yeah. I imagine that also creates some facility efficiencies as well.
Yes, definitely be able to share the same. Yes, exactly.
Starlee, who authorizes charter schools? And can you explain for our group what an LEA is?
Yes, I will. I will do my very best to not be technical on that. But if I can, before I do that, just want to add to what Representative Hole was just saying about the really beautiful collaboration that's happening between the charters and Spring Branch ISD. One of the things that I know they're really proud of is they started a pilot project within that partnership a couple of years ago where Yes Prep was doing, that's a charter school, was doing first-year teacher training for some of the brand-new teachers that were coming into classrooms. And what they found over time was that the Yes Prep first-year teacher program, training program, was so strong that those teachers had really exceptional outcomes over time, and really critically, they stayed in the classroom longer. Right? So that's what we all want. We want great teachers who are trained really well to stay in the classroom for a long time. And so what ended up happening in that partnership is that Yes Prep is now training all of the first-year teachers for Spring Branch because their first-year training program went so well, and the teachers reported higher job satisfaction, and their kids were doing better. So that's a really, really great example of how we like to say that charter schools are compliments to ISDs. We are there to fill in gaps, and that is, you know, that's our job, and we're really proud of that partnership that's happening there. So, okay, so charter schools in Texas are authorized in a couple of ways. Almost all of our charter schools in Texas are authorized by the state. School districts can also authorize charter schools. The vast majority of the school districts, the ISDs in Texas, have chosen not to do that. But there's a handful that have, about 30. Universities in Texas can also authorize charter schools, and we have charter schools associated with UT and with a couple of other smaller schools. And we also have a special thing in Texas where some cities can ask for permission to authorize charter schools, and we have one city in the Dallas area that has chosen to do that. But the vast majority of our schools are authorized by the state. And when they're authorized by the state, they become their own, like a little mini-school district. So that's, LEA stands for Local Education Authority, and all of our ISDs in Texas are LEAs, and all of our state-authorized charter schools are LEAs as well.
Awesome. Thank you for that. For the representatives on the panel, with this context for the audience, what should the role of cities be toward schools in their jurisdiction?
Well, I mean, they play a role currently in what we see as traditional ISDs. I think it should be no different. I think it's defined already on the role that how they interact with other local governments is the way they interact currently. And I think it should be parity between them and the charter schools.
Yeah. I would say, you know, we learned a lot during this pandemic, right? We had a county judge in Harris County who basically came in and tried to shut us schools down or tell us what we can and can't do. Now, that was for all schools. So that was ISDs, charters, everybody else. And, you know, I basically told her to piss off, and we're not doing that. So, because they don't have any authority. Their ISDs and charters are governed by their own rules as well as put out there, and let them make those decisions with the context that, you know, we want our students to be safe. We want our teachers to be safe. We want, you know, kids to get an education. I don't believe that the cities need to be involved in that. And one of the other things we saw was there was, you know, this ongoing issue with Houston ISD. And, you know, we just had a ruling that came out that the appellate court, you know, sided with the ISD, Houston ISD, because we've been trying to take them over for governance issues and failing schools and things of that nature. And so, you know, we've seen a real big expansion in the Houston area as a result of the lack of performance for Houston. So, and at one point in time, the city was thinking about getting involved, and they, you know, the mayor at that point thought better of it and said, no, I don't think this is something that we need to be doing. And so I was pleased that they didn't. But, you know, cities need to lead schools alone. They're created constitutionally. You know, we create, the legislature creates and allows counties to exist and allows cities to exist, and we allow ISDs to exist, and we allow charters to exist. And they have their own governance in place for each of those. And so, you know, what I tell people is, you know, you stay out of our sandbox, and we'll stay out of yours. And I think that that was proven very systematically through the opening of schools and the guidance that we provided from the state level to our districts, and then let superintendents make their own decisions, you know? And that's the beauty of the system that we have in place. I think that if you create a system where, had we let them get away with that in certain environments, that you would have a more power-taking that would be happening, when we candidly need less of that. We need our districts to be able to do their jobs, and the charters to be able to do their jobs. But once again, you know, if you're a bad school, regardless of your charter and ISD, then, you know, there needs to be action that needs to be taken specifically on that. And I think that we've created a lot of opportunity for the districts through district charter partnerships and things of that nature that allow them to be successful.
Like the Sky partnership, yeah.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
So I actually want to dig a little bit further into some things that you said. You mentioned underperforming schools or bad schools. Some superintendents have said that since their districts are highly rated, it's time for their cities to cut off charter schools in a given area. Why would they say that, and is it true?
Well, I guess I'll take a stab at that. No, it's not true. And I think that cities, like I said, need to stay in their own sandbox, and the ISDs need to stay in their own sandbox. There's been an interesting thing that's happened, and, you know, like Senator West, as an example, has talked about this. I think he's been supportive, and I know Harold Dutton's been supportive of certainly charter schools and going into the areas. You know, it's competition. It creates, you know, makes you better, right? You know, and there's just certain areas where charters probably won't go, but there's going to be other ones in other areas that they will go. You know, we remind the cities that, once again, they don't really have authority to make the decision of where they go. Now, what they can do is be punitive to the charters, specifically on the permitting and things of that nature and their tax base. And that's one of the big beefs that we've had for years on that is that, you know, there's a lot of charter schools that are leasing, not a lot, but there's charter schools that are leasing space, or they don't own their own real estate, you know, things of that nature, and they're paying property taxes. And so it's kind of a weird thing, you know? You think about that. So they're paying property taxes, and as I said earlier, the majority of your property taxes are going to the school district. So they're paying property taxes to the school district, and in turn, we're giving them money, you know, to pay those property taxes. That's because the funding comes from the state. It's insanity when you think about that. So, I mean, those are things that we really need to fix.
And that one, you've worked with Representative Murphy, I believe, on that one before?
I have.
And why hasn't that one crossed the finish line yet? I know that one is a little bit legally complex.
You know, I think we, well, I would just say that we tried, we did work on it last session. We got it out of the committee. Kind of got parked in calendars for a while, but we were a little busy on some other things last session. So, you know, it's something certainly that needs to get addressed as we go forward. So I'm supportive of doing that.
Obviously, there's a whole lot going on this session as well. Is that something y'all feel is going to be on the table for this session?
You know, I will say this, is that, you know, none of us know what committees we're going to be on or what we're going to do, or who's going to be the chair of what or anything like that. That's just the way the system works. You know, my focus is going to be on fixes to, that we need to fix for HB3. I'm certain that Chairman Murphy will be trying to pass that again. He's been very supportive of charters in his district and his area. And so I assume it'll be something that certainly will get filed. But based upon, you know, the fact that with everything going down, I just don't think there's going to be as many bills, I'm not saying there won't be as many bills filed, because I think there will be, but I just don't think there's going to be the opportunity to hear a lot of legislation. You know, last session in my committee, public education receives the most amount of bills of any other committee. And I think ultimately, we ended up hearing somewhere around 400 bills, which is insane. But I just don't think the time will be there to be able to do that this time.
Yeah. Speaking of bills from last time that might show up again this time around, this particular, the bill we started talking about, House Bill 3155, to try to create some parity between charters.
Well, I think it's already filed. I don't know the new bill number, but I believe we've already filed it, that bill. But not, it'll be filed soon.
And it stalled out in calendars in the House last time, past House Public Education, but never actually made it to the floor. What are we going to, what might be different this time, if anything?
Well, I'm going to work hard on it. I was on calendars. I don't think it was hung up in cal, I think we got out of calendars, and then there was some amendment done in the Senate, and we had to try to get it out of committee again. And then there were some negotiations, and the clock kind of ran out on one specific issue that was sticky to the charter school people, that it wouldn't change, and we couldn't get that one last vote for the, out of the, yeah, the Senate-House Conference Committee.
Yeah, yeah.
But it got out of calendar.
Yeah, the Senate Committee, the Senate version seems to have some trouble in the House Committee.
Yeah, some change in there, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so disparity between versions.
Right. But I believe that we would be successful. I believe people understand. It's just a matter of just fairness. I mean, it is a state-sanctioned education facility. It's a public school. And so I think, and as time goes by and we see what goes on, like in your district where ISDs are pairing with and using the strength of each other to work together, then you're going to see people really understand that it's not necessarily a competition issue, even though it helped the school districts that may, on your question earlier, because they have improved, they no longer need charter schools. Well, if charter schools got them to improve, they really do continue to need charter schools, or they'll slide back into wherever they were before the charter schools came along. So I don't think that that would be the way to go, is to say, okay, our school district got reached an A, we're going to block all charter schools. No, I don't, I wouldn't agree to that.
Yeah. Starlee, that's something you've had, yeah.
And we want to just jump in on that. You know, we have some research that we're going to be releasing later this month, where we've taken a look at all of the major, like in the largest metro area of the state, the top ten. Almost all of those districts are rated A or B, right? So that is what the state considers a high performing district. But even inside those high performing districts, we have family campuses or, you know, neighborhoods where all of their campuses are rated D or F. So the idea that we would block charters from coming into a district, you know, that is rated an A or a B, just because, you know, because some of the campuses are, well, is completely, you know, completely outside of the bounds of what anybody, you know, what anybody thought would be the role of charter schools. And the research that we have coming later this month took a look at the achievements inside of those A and B rated districts. And what we found, and you know, probably not going to surprise anybody in that room that's with you today, the reason that districts by and large are rated A and B is the strength of the performance of upper-middle-class white children, and not because all kids are performing well. And it is crazy, frankly, to think that just because upper-middle-class white children are performing well, that low-income children or children of color don't deserve options if the schools in their communities have been failing for generations. And I just, I can't even believe that this is like a real conversation on the table, because it is, it basically, if we go down that road, you're basically saying as a state that we're okay if only our white children are successful. And when we look at the demographics of the public schools in this state, if that's where we stand, we're going to be in a world of hurt, because that is not the future of the kids in our public schools. So we have to just take a real long, hard look at what we're really saying, about who we are and our values, if we... about who we are and our values if we go down that road.
You make a really good point there, Starlee. We are heading that way as an entire state, but demographically, the students in our schools, we are already a majority minority state. Majority of students in our Texas public schools are the students that you mentioned, students of color. We also have a majority of students who are classified as economically disadvantaged. So it's very important to make sure that we're trying and encouraging success for students who have been historically disadvantaged, they're our future here in Texas. So I'm really glad you brought that up. Now, the money question, district officials will also bring up, not just, you know, we're doing well so we don't need this, this competitive influence, but this is also making a hit on our finances. It's a little bit complicated to explain briefly, but Chairman, if anybody can do it, it's probably you, and Starlee, you've had a lot of experience talking about this as well. What kind of impact do charter schools have on district finances? And is that something that's worthy of consideration in this discussion about where charter schools can operate?
Starlee, you want to go first?
Yeah, oh, sure, make me go first on the hard question. Thanks. Look, the way that school finance is structured in Texas is that a big chunk of the majority of the money that is assigned to educate a kid follows them to whatever school they attend. So whether that student attends, you know, they are in an ISD and they're going to their assigned school, or they ask for a transfer to go to a different school inside their ISD, or they move and they go to, you know, they start going to school in a different ISD, or they go to a charter school. So the money in Texas moves around as children move around. And, you know, I believe and I think, you know, probably most of the folks who are watching today, you know, probably support too, the idea that that money should follow the student to the public school that they're attending. You know, we can't stop students from moving, you know, so we can't, you know, we just, that's just not the way that it works, right? The funding belongs to the kid, not to the system. It is our job to make sure that we protect what is sacred in our school districts and in our, in our public education system at large, and that's the kid. It's not, it's not the system that's sacred, it's the student. So that's where the funding belongs. I know that that is painful there for districts sometimes. But look, you know, you laid this out at the very beginning. We have been around for 25 years in Texas and even with the very rapid growth that we have had in the last decade and what we project for the next 10, we, you know, we are, charter schools are growing quite fast. And in the next 10 years, between the growth that we expect at charters, we're barely going to hop into 7% of the overall student body. So, you know, we really have to just be realistic too, that, you know, ISDs still have 93% of the kids and all the resources that go along with that. And we think that ISDs and charters can coexist, we can, you know, we can find ways to work together and to make sure that everybody has the resources that we need to do a good job for the kids.
District opinions and budgets aside, what does this, what's often referred to as a student centered funding system, what does that mean for kids?
Lacey, you want to take that tough question? I'm messing with you. Yeah, so we've heard this argument for years, right? And one of the things that we accomplished in the overhaul of the finance system last year, which by the way hadn't been done in 25 plus years, was that we want to be centered specifically on the child. And as an increase to the basic allotment, which we did, and then, you know, charters get an average where the districts are at, and I've heard, you know, tons of ISDs and superintendents bitch about it. And once again, I always say the same thing, you know, stay in your own sandbox. You know, you've got the ability to, you know, if your voters would approve it, if you want more money, you can go get it. If you're proving to them that you're doing a good job and all the necessities that go around that. So when you talk about, you know, student focused and what we're talking about is directing those funds directly to the kids, a lot of what was done was the formula based changes that we made last session. So as an example, you know, specific funding for dyslexia, right? We did that for the first time ever. We increased the compensatory education weight, but we did it not just, you know, we used to give it a .2, now it's a .2 to, or .225 to a .275. And that's just a formula based on the basic allotment, I'm going to get in the weeds and I'm going to lose you all here in a second. But, you know, there's a whole complexity that goes into making sure that those resources are getting to that kid.
Yeah.
And it's both for ISDs and for charters because we have a responsibility to do that. So one of the things that has always been interesting, and I think Starlee hit it right on the head, which is that, and I don't think it's 93%, I think it's less than that. I think we're, not less, but more than that, but you know, somewhere around, you know, I always say between 5% to 6% of the total population, and we think about 5.5 million kids in the public school system. Oh, by the way, charter schools are public schools. You know, all the money's going in to the public school system, right? And so, but, you know, it's clear to me that, you know, one of the other things that I think, you know, if we had time to do it this session, which I don't believe we really do, is that we really needed to focus on the special education kids. I think that we failed them miserably during this pandemic. It's been clear to me, you know, and I have, I've had two, I've got another one that's got a 504 that we're dealing with right now. And, you know, some districts do a really good job of that. And I'm going to blame both charters and ISDs that I think that they have failed these, this population of kids. And so I want to see more money focused on that. So one of the things, it was a very quiet thing that happened during this pandemic that I don't think many people realize, was that we actually created a fund that will allow parents to be able to make some choices to get services outside of regular schools. It's going to run through the, and we settled with the government over our MOE, which is a maintenance of effort that we did. But one of the things that we did to qualify that is that now the 20 regional service centers that are out there can go to a child that is a sped kid, not necessarily just 504 because 504 is encompassing of everything, that's the federal guidelines for that, but really, a really special needs kid, and a parent can go pick and choose from a cafeteria of plans of things that is outside. So that's a big step, I think, for us to be able to do that. I'd like to see that expanded. I think that if districts are unable or incapable of providing services, then we need to give parents an option and the opportunity to be able to do that, is my opinion.
Yeah, so what we're talking about here is the ability for parents to have some direction and say over the supplemental services that are given to their child. And section 504, if I, correct me if I get this wrong, section 504 is when a child needs accommodations within the school system. And then sped, special education often refers to a student who has an official IEP or individual education plan. Those students often have supplemental services involved. And this would give families some additional funding and a little bit more say in how those supplemental services are distributed. Have I got that right?
For the most part.
Okay.
It's pretty close.
Okay.
Even if you're a 504 kid, you still have an IEP.
This is, yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
My bad. Now, y'all came off a campaign trail a couple of months ago. Starlee, you've been in the throes of helping your districts, your charter schools, deal with COVID. Want to spend a few minutes just addressing the elephant in the room, or the masks in the room, COVID-19. It's made a huge impact on students and schools for this year. Starlee, I want to hear anything you've got to say about the way the charters have had to cope with that. Chairman Heberti, you just addressed some of the major challenges that the legislature's going to have to deal with in responding to COVID. What else has COVID done to change the way we're dealing with public education? What have we got to address this session?
Okay, I'll go first and just say that, you know, like ISDs, charters, you know, had to shift overnight in March to be virtual. I will acknowledge that because charters are just generally so much smaller than ISDs, right? You know, we were able to make that transition very quickly in most cases. And then when school was coming back into session in August, you know, the vast majority of charter schools started in person on time because their parents were demanding that they did. And, you know, charters are all schools of choice. If parents don't show up with their kids on the first day of school, you know, charters, charters are in trouble. No one is assigned. So they're obviously extremely responsive to the parents and what parents are demanding. And the vast majority of charters across the state started in person on time because parents were saying they needed that to happen. And, you know, I will say as far as, you know, public health goes, of course, there have been a couple of COVID cases, you know, in schools, of course. We have really only had one, one or two situations where charter schools, I think, and I think I'm seeing this sort of generally across the state with ISDs as well, where campuses have had to close for a day or two because of, you know, somebody having COVID. And in most cases, it's been the teachers and like going to the teacher's lounge or something and having a meeting and then infecting a bunch of their colleagues. And so there's not enough teachers to come to campus to keep the school open. So they have to close for a couple of days while, while everybody gets tested. But look, you know, this is obviously an extremely challenging environment for everybody to operate in. It's really stressful for teachers. There's been a lot of unexpected expenses, of course. This has been hard, you know, for all of our educators, ISDs and charter alike. And, you know, we're all in this boat together, you know, trying to respond to something that, you know, you just, nobody could have anticipated or planned for this. And, you know, I think, I certainly am extremely proud and humbled all the time about how incredible our charter leaders have been in getting kids back on campus safely and getting them through, you know, online programs when they weren't intending to do that. So I've been really impressed.
Representative Desatell, what have your communities been facing and what do they need based on the situation of the last year?
I think we, you know, we learned a lot because of COVID and having to try to shift from regular classroom to virtual classrooms and trying to make that transition that we weren't ready, it was just dropped on us. But I think what I got out, sort of what I got out of it is we talk about technology and education, we talk about moving from paper textbooks to digital education, digital communication. It became clear that however advanced we get, kids still need teachers in front of them, whether they're reading from a textbook or a computer screen. They're not going to learn and they're not going to advance just by themselves in front of a computer. The computer may be necessary, the laptop, the digital information, but they need that personal teacher there with them, particularly in the lower grades and through elementary school. I think it brought that into clarity as people began to talk about, well, someday, you know, we won't even need teachers in the classroom, everybody'd be able to learn virtually. We see that that's not, mentally, we aren't built that way to be able to make that transition. And so I think we learned that. And so that we learned if we be prepared, that we're going to have to get teachers back before students as soon as possible.
We will never not need teachers.
Right, yeah, I got that out of that.
Yeah. Representative Hull, what are you hearing in your district?
Really how they're all working together. I know, obviously with the Sky Partnership, but I know that when I talk to them, the amount of money that they have all spent trying to tackle the COVID issue and really just working together to try and do what's best for all the students.
Well, it's time for us to head into audience Q and A. As we start this, there'll be two mics roving the room. Obviously, we're pretty spread out this time around, so just ask that you try to help the folks with the mics out if they need to get past you, try to allow them to do that. And don't be surprised or offended if they hold onto the mic for you just to make sure that we're minimizing any kind of germ transmission that might happen on those things. So any questions that we have for this panel? One right here in the front.
So I have worked in spring branch ISD for nine years and as a speech pathologist, autism specialist, I'm retired now. But I am concerned about what's going to happen when it's time to advance these kids on next year. Are they going to all be tested to find out who is actually ready to move on? Some kids have hunkered down and learned. The, I think in a lot of places, the majority probably have not met what they need to do. Are those kids going to advance a year and then be unprepared in the coming year? Or are we ready to deal with the fact that many of them will have to repeat the year?
Do you want to answer that one, Lacey?
I'll leave that to you.
Okay. Yeah, so in fact, I was just talking to a reporter that it was, that was on here, that was, while I was coming in here today, driving up here. And we were going through the STAR test and things of that nature. There is a, there has been, and I just can't believe this, but there has been a push by some of my colleagues for us to get rid of the tests and all these other things, which by the way, we can't do, it's federal guideline, it's as required, so. And, you know, just kind of kicked the can down the road, which we ended up doing last year because as Chairman Desatell, you know, put it, is that we really failed those kids, right? I mean, we didn't know what the heck we were doing. I mean, nobody could have ever planned or prepared for anything that happened at the end of last year. And I think some school districts did an okay job and I think others did a horrible job. And so we already started with how far behind are these kids? And the meat and potatoes of House Bill 3 was really about, you know, making sure, and, you know, we had this kind of novel idea that we think that every kid in third grade ought to be able to read at third grade level, right? I mean, it's, you know, just seems like what they ought to be able to do. But we are going to absolutely have the tests this year. You know, we've gotten rid of the accountability system for the kids and also for the districts itself. But we need to get a baseline and understand where these kids are at. But with, you know, the majority of these kids that are coming in, I think there's going to be opportunities, as we put into House Bill 3, opportunity for summer school if they want to continue to remediate those kids. And I think that's one of the, the really baseline ideas to understand how far behind these children are. And then we can then spend the resources, because by the way, we didn't spend all the money that we were supposed to spend on House Bill 3 for a variety of reasons, like the teacher incentive allotment and some of those other things, because the districts just couldn't implement them in time. And so there's resources that will be available for us to remediate those kids. But we have to know where they're at. I mean, we have to get some idea. You know, I mean, I've heard some horror stories with districts that are out there where, you know, especially the districts that did a lot of virtual stuff at the very beginning and are still doing it, where more than 50% of the kids are really failing. And that is a, that is a problem. And I'm tired, candidly, of people that, you know, and some of my colleagues that have done this, that are sending letters and saying, we need to get rid of the tests, we need to do all these other things. I'm like, no, 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 no. We need to know where these kids are at so we can put resources in to help them. Because absent of that, you know, we're going to have another situation where you're going to have districts and schools that will just be continuously failing. And that's both for charters and ISDs. You know, so, I mean, you know, I'm not picking on Starlee or what they're doing because I think they're doing a good job, but I know for a fact where charter schools are failing. I know for a fact where ISDs are failing. And we need to, we need to get a handle on it. And the only way that we can do that is to make sure we get a baseline on that. And then the districts need to do a good job. And I will tell you, what really irks me more than anything is I think that we have just, we have just, you know, once again, failed the special education population. And that's a significant problem. So, you know, I appreciate the work that you did on autism and things of that nature, but you know this as much as I do, is that kids like that need personal interaction. They need to be able to be there, they need their resources. So, you know, if districts, you know, want to continue to fight us on these kind of things, then they're going to, they're going to get something they're not going to like.
I had somebody asking me about that question just the other day, and I just had to remind them, it sounds like you did the same, that the kind of test we administer might be decided by the federal government, but best practice is what dictates that we conduct assessments at all.
Absolutely.
That still has to happen.
Hundred percent.
Any other questions? When I, oh, never mind, we've got one right here at the front. For the virtual crowd.
Yeah, I work in TPS, so I should not be having to ask this question, I should know this. Can we spend GERS money on remediation? Do you know?
And GERS money is money from the Federal Cares Act that was awarded to governors across the country for use in shoring up education over the course of this pandemic.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like, I mean, Yeah, I mean, it just seems like, I mean, Chairman Heberti couldn't be more right. I think we all agree on this. We must do the STAR, because the kids that we've lost last year, the situation has only gotten worse, and it's not promising to get better. Unless we know where kids are, we can't help them academically. So I'm just wondering, of course, in a resource-strapped session, although the comptroller was a little more optimistic perhaps than maybe many of us thought, so that's kind of a good news, but we should be putting money where it's needed most, and those are the kids, the special needs kids, and those that have fallen behind and have been lost in the system should be priorities. I'm just wondering what, if the governor, I don't know if any of you all know this, if the governor has authority to direct those money, say, to remediation? Just curious.
Lacey, you want to take that one? She just got here. So Joe, you want to do that one? The answer is yes, we've already done it. We've done it with the funds that I told you about with special education. The good news was is that the governor advocated that we keep the $1.8 billion that we had left over. Under the new CARES Act program, we're expecting about $5 billion. So two things, I talked to Chairman Friglione, who's downstairs talking about the budget. He and I visited today. We're going to go try to see the governor in the next day or so. One of the things that needs to happen is that we need to give certainty to the districts, including the charters, all districts, and of maintaining the whole harmless that we put into place. And my, my position on that is that I want you to go find where these kids are, and I want you to spend the resources to figure out how far behind they are, and then figure out what are your next steps to be able to deal with that. That's step one. So meaning, you know, we're still missing in some cases between 3% to 4% of the kids across districts, which is crazy when you think about it. I mean, it was, it was high, in some cases, at 10%. So, I mean, you had a district where, and again, I'm not trying to pick on Houston, but I watched their board meeting, and, you know, they were missing 13,000 kids. 13,000 kids, right? That's the size of most districts, or bigger than most districts in the state of Texas. And so let's continue to, you know, and I know people have a differing opinion. They say, well, we're just giving them money and they're not doing anything. No, we're going to create some belts and suspenders around some of those resources to get them. And then as we go forward, absolutely, I think that, you know, more money needs to be plugged in to be able to get these kids back. Because if not, we're going to have a generation of children that are just going to be set up for failure, in my opinion.
Anybody else want to add to that before we move on to another question, Starlee? I see you nodding, so I wanted to ask. Okay.
Yeah, I would just chime in to say that I completely agree with Chairman Heberti. You know, you wouldn't go to a doctor that doesn't use a thermometer, and you can't, you know, we cannot send kids to schools that aren't using tests, right? That's how we know if they are learning what we have an expectation that they will learn. And the idea that we would not ask kids to demonstrate what they've learned, that this has been a year, that they have been, that many kids around the state have been out of a classroom for a year. And that, you know, we have to know where kids are so that, you know, as Chairman Heberti said, so that this health pandemic doesn't turn into a generational educational crisis, right? And that, you know, if we don't make sure that we know where kids are and make sure that schools have the resources that they need and the expectation, the accountability expectation, to make sure that they do the work to get kids back to where they need to be, this will be a generational problem.
It's a little hard to pay districts per student, on a student basis, like we were talking about, if we don't even know if the kids are showing up and getting educated. Seth, I think we've got one right here. Yes, sir?
Yes, kind of going to talk about charter schools in general. It's almost more of a comment than a question. I'm a businessman. My kids are long out of, out of a school, and that's not something I think about every day, but as a community person, obviously, I think about it. And one of the things I just want to share with is I think the general community, not that maybe the parents have got kids in school right now, but the general community doesn't understand what a charter school is, or they have a mild understanding. They may even say, oh, it's public. But if you did a survey, I think you really wouldn't know. The only reason I even got into it, the reason I'm here today, is because several charter schools became my client, and so I got interested in finding out what they were about and understand how they got funded. And then I went and visited some campuses, and I see some great, incredible results that are teaching culture and teaching respect for seniors. Obviously, not all charter schools the same way, but I just think there needs to be some public generation of awareness of charter schools, what they stand for, what they're intended for, to get people to talk to the representatives at meetings and so forth, to start supporting that more aggressively. And I would say the same thing with private schools. Public schools are great, that's what I did myself. My kids went through private school. I traded for merchandise to get my kids to private school and so forth, so you do different things. But I also now see where charter schools could be a real advantage to some people that don't have the option for private school and want a competitor for public school. So just encouraging public knowledge of what, you know, give it three speaking points what a charter school is, so that people start to understand that.
I'd be curious, too, yes, Representative Desatell?
Well, I mean, I certainly agree with what he's saying, but I think we need to start with our colleagues. I think our colleagues don't understand. Or the legislators don't understand. And that's where we really need to do work.
Well, I was about to ask if y'all have run into that in your districts as well, but it sounds like maybe, maybe we need to start closer down. Have you seen that as well?
Yes, definitely. I mean, and even just knocking doors, the people that talk to me about charter schools were parents of kids in charter schools or parents trying to get their kids in charter schools, but that was pretty much the extent.
That's where the awareness ends?
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody else before we go to the next question? All right, yes, sir?
Thank you. I want to just go back to the pandemic and schools opening or not opening in person. So it's sort of a question for Starlee and then maybe some public school representation. Because you, if I understood you, you were saying, because parents kind of needed and kind of demanded that the schools be open in person in August, most charter schools opened in person. And so that means the kids would be learning better, based on what we've heard today. And you all probably didn't lose a lot through lack of attendance, because your funding depends on the student being there. You don't have whole harmless agreements or things like that. Your funding, if there's no students, you don't get any money. So would that be an advantage of that type of funding mechanism, in your opinion? Or, and my question is, did the public schools eventually catch up to you? Were y'all ahead a little bit? I'm not sure. I think some of the public schools may still not be completely in person, but I may be factually wrong, I don't know. I'd like a sort of a comparison on that.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So overall, charter school enrollment growth this year, or not growth necessarily, but just enrollment, is up about 7% since the beginning, just the beginning of the school year. So as districts, ISDs around the state have chosen to, you know, limit the number of kids that can come back in person, we are definitely feeling the impact of that, of parents choosing to put their children in charters instead so that they can be in person. You know, that doesn't mean that that won't hold, right? When, when everybody's back in person, you know, in August of this year, you know, kids may go back to their ISD that they've been in before, who knows? But, but we, you know, we were actually in the same, we are governed right now under the same full-fledged signature that ISD has. So right now, there's a, there's a board for all of us, for charters and for ISDs, that basically says, we're not going to let you fall below, you know, a certain floor of funding while we're, you know, navigating through, through the pandemic. So we are all operating under that same, under that same system. But I will tell you, as a membership organization, for us, the Charter School Association, you know, we are talking to our member schools all the time, and very, very few of them have had an enrollment dip. Most of them have seen enrollment growth this year. So, you know, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be in a, in a place where we would be dipping below that, that floor anyway, because our enrollment growth has been so strong. You know, I think, you know, Texas is, Texas is so interesting. You know, we don't have, you know, we don't have strong teachers, like you think of in California or Chicago, where, you know, where the teachers go on strike if you're about, you know, like, we're hearing about all the stories, like, in California right now, the teachers are saying that they're not going to, you know, they're not going to come back just full, full-time in person until, you know, certain, you know, the government in California has done certain things, like, you know, a $15 an hour minimum wage, and, you know, all kinds of stuff that has absolutely nothing to do with educating kids, social policy issues, and all kinds of things, and ban charter schools. That's one of their, that's one of the planks of their demands. We don't have that here, right? We don't have that same, you know, thread that we have to deal with, because Texas lawmakers a long time ago made it clear that, that ISDs don't have to engage in collective bargaining with the teachers again. But that doesn't mean, just because we don't have collective bargaining agreements in place in Texas, that doesn't mean that there aren't, you know, a lot of pressure, pressures being put on ISD boards right now by, by our local teachers to not have teachers back in the classroom, you know, and, and, you know, I, that's a mistake, right? I mean, the kids need to be back in school, and they need their teachers there with them. And there is a way to do this safely for children that protects teachers, that keeps kids safe, but that makes sure that students are, are learning. And, and, you know, we have, we have got to put that, whatever adult-oriented politics are in the way aside to make sure that we are doing right for the kids and getting them back on campuses is imperative.
Like we said earlier, we're never going to not need teachers. So if kids need instruction, we're going to need some sort of teacher interaction with them. Thank you for that answer, Starlee, and thank you, Ellen, for the question. We're coming up on time today. I want to, I've closed panels before with quotes from poetry, like by W. B. Yeats. Today, I'm picking a rather prosaic source, the Texas Education Code. This is the, this is the mission of public education in Texas. The mission of the public education system of this state is to ensure that all Texas children have access to a quality education that enables them to achieve their potential and fully participate now and in the future in the social, economic, and educational opportunities of our state and nation. So as we head into legislative season, as stakeholders, advocates, legislators, my hope is that we'll be able to keep this mission paramount. It's been said before that children are 1/3 of our population and all of our future. So we hope we can all work together to make sure that that future is strong and vibrant. That concludes our panel. I hope you'll join me in thanking our panelists for their time today. Thank you all.